You're good.
My name is Angela and I have some friends in Miami that tune in, so welcome. We are here tonight with special guest speaker, Mr. Thomas Dentz, who I think ran from me the first time I asked if he would be his neighbor. He said, "No." But I said, "Look, you have twelve brothers. That's all you need to talk about." Anybody knows that the past day you know it still. But we also know that he has a much deeper and richer history of service to the community that we appreciate and I can't wait to hear about. We're gonna start off though with a PowerPoint presentation that is gonna introduce us to the Dentz family legacy. And then we would like Mr. Dentz to come up and share some stories with us.
Welcome to the Dentz legacy, the twelve brothers of Perry County. They both came here to warn Madison County in nineteen hundred. A young man he worked for several cities and towns in North Florida before finally settling down in Perry around nineteen thirty-five. His wife Sarah was born in Perry County in nineteen eighty. Sarah and John were married in late nineteen thirties and established their family in Compton, Florida on the east side of Perry. As they found a room, they settled on Beach Beach on the north side of Perry. This area was called Color Town, which is tightly connected to a square sonnet where the grade school and Sweet Home Baptist Church played sandbox games and ghouled the men under the wonderful eyes of the parents and neighbors. For now, talk about this square sonnet. John, he was the first born son. He went forth as a young child to get support his family, support the rest of the family and the brothers. His first job he threw work for local farmer, boys' hand, and bishop's conch. Uncle John came to split and still and cut and still. He was known as one of the best that they had. Because of the work at the steel mill, he was told if he had any brother, they would hire him right away. John Mary Mary Rogers, he was the father of three sons. Next we have Thomas. Thomas started working in eighty-nine for a war cabinet. Besides the pig, he was sometimes getting chickens to take home to help feed the growing family. Thomas was the first African-American city county and the first African-American mayor of Perry's ward. He was also the first African-American serving both the city council and Perry County Commissioner. Thomas was married to Louie Lee, who was kind of heavy-headed and they had four children. Uncle Thomas is known for leaving, he sent you a gift to the rest of the brothers when grandma and he ran out of town. They had been brought to keep the family together. They always host dinners and they're handing Thanksgiving dinner to the one forty-eighters. They also regularly hold Sunday dinners for family. Thank you for Thomas, Uncle Louie. Next we have Jimmy. Jimmy also was a longtime brother of Lord Daniel, old preacher Valentine. They sixteen of you would work at the press and at the Perry printing office. When in youth, he was not playing football, played jerking high school, playing for the legendary coach Sam Turner. Daddy said he got his speed from running through the graveyard taking a run down to his mama's. He said he was so scared of the brick cemetery that that built his speed up. He remained in his feet in nineteen sixty. Jimmy was the first of the sons to attend college. He earned his degree from Warner River Junior College in Moundson and offered Florida Indian University in Cali-Mathis, Florida. He spent fifty-five years working social work doing his self justice system abroad. He also became the first black administrator in the Florida Department of Health and Medicaid Services. By working for HR realty, he got a county's family connected to favor social services. He also was a unit counselor. He helped many young people get still in the right direction. He was married to Francis Ripley and they had three daughters. They were named Charles. Now Uncle Charles, while his parents and older brothers were all working, he could let the charge run in half. He watched his younger brothers dig laundry and other chores. And made sure the stuff was stored by the time Grandma Sarah died. Charles played football for Coach Sam Turner and basketball for Coach Richard Bell at Jersey. Over thirty-four years, Uncle Charles had worked in steel processing industry. At eighty years old, he was still working in the industry as a crane operator with no sign of stopping. He don't want to retire. Uncle Charles was not married. A retired registered dietitian at three yards. Next we have Uncle Chester. Chester was another outstanding football player at Jersey High School. He was known for his one long counter. As a great musician, he began working at the Forest and Reeves and Buckeye at eighteen. And was on that job when he got drafted to the Army in nineteen ninety-nine. Uncle Chester was a US Army Combat Unit veteran. He served at a machine yard in the United States Army with the first infantry unit, known as Big Red One. He spent fifty years preaching to Germans. He founded and built Christian Tabernacle Church here at Paterson in nineteen eighty-eight. He was married to Carolyn Oakley, his co-founder and entire dedicated man to church. Next we have Luke, known as Uncle Buddy. Luke was a very good football player at Jersey High School. He also worked at Dr. Martin's Market. He was voted by councilman's class. At the high school, he went to John Ford and he joined the after. He finished career in juvenile justice. He made lasting impression on young people in the big man area. Inspired by his younger brother, he also went to barbershop and opened a barber shop in the Vaughn Community in Southside of Cali-Mathis. He was married to Carolyn, Bethany, and helped raise the three children. Uncle Buddy was known as a love of fine and shiny life. My mom said he won a hundred dollar parachute in the nineteen sixties. And he had a spare money to go and give him back to Perry. Next we have Uncle Harold. In the childhood, Eric worked for Mr. Gerald Ripley delivering the cafeteria newspaper around the city, fifty cents a night. He would ride up at four o'clock P.M., six days a week, pick the papers from the bus station and throw the papers from the back of the car and the old man Ripley drove them around. He also played football at Jersey High School. After graduation, he moved to work in the city sanitation. If he was on that job, he also was drafted to the US Army. Then, when he got back, he went back to a job with the sanitation department. Then he got a position with Buckeye. He worked there for forty years. As a law law clerk, he ended to heavy equipment operator in the crew, huge crop crane. Eric managed to build many a tank and together they raised four children. Now we have Alexander, better known as Maggie. Like all his other brothers, Alexander worked for farmers and at Dr. Martin's. He later worked in residence and commercial construction. He even helped to build a magic team at Walt Disney World. He's known for his sense of humor. He could light up a crowd at any gathering with his laugh and the family stories. He was second in the brothers to be called a priest and he passed it for over twenty years. He had raised a farm to build a peace design Baptist church in Atherton Springs. He was married to Minnie Marks because they raised four children and he also had two sons and came to Georgia. Next we have Jordan. Jordan, one of the ones in Gethsemane or living working as long as he been able to walk. Uncle Jordan was unable to walk until he was four years old, but he never stopped after that. And our child, he also did old man Gethsemane cleaning up big beaches in Taylor County. He also played football at Jersey High School. In nineteen sixty-nine, he and his brother, the gentleman, were among the first to integrate Perry County High School. However, they were later given the choice to graduate from Jersey High School. He had been with the city for forty years. He did retire from town, he called it right, and he still worked. And he also fought for two. Willie Dean, a child Willie Dean worked at Dr. Martin's and Chanting and Dick's Takeover Theater. He also played basketball in Jersey. He later went to work for Livingston Furniture and Jackson Barley Company delivering sulfur water. In nineteen seventy-seven, he went to join his brother John Charles to work in Dick Floyd Steel Industry. He didn't work with GM for fifty years. A stump supporter of American made products, he is known as Saint by America. Willie Dean is married to Janette and Janette and has three children. Next we have George. George was known all over Perry County for working in fast food and his longer time association with the Glitter Man. He was an outstanding basketball player and track athlete at Jersey High School. After leaving the fast school, he went to work at Tom Perry Church. He later moved to Perry County School District for more stability and better retirement. George is also one of the four barbers in the family. George loved playing no cards in eighty and now owns a nineteen forty ship that he loves. He had been in the school system for thirty-eight years. He was married to a Aunt Brown and they had one daughter. Last we had baby, Henry Herman. Herman is the youngest son of the Dentz family. He was only twelve years old when his father died. As a young boy, he wrote in the same shoe shine stamp as some of his brothers. He also worked at Dr. Martin's for seven years, for several years. At the graduation from Perry County High School, he enrolled in North Florida Junior College. He left there to attend barbershop and became the first licensed barber in the family. He also attended Pat Thomas Academy to become an arms dealer. Herman worked at Tom's School for several years. Then he went to work for the Perry County School District for twenty-four years. He was well-known for his community volunteer work with local food giveaway. Herman had one daughter from his marriage to Patricia Candy. John Dentz passed away in nineteen sixty-eight. Sarah passed away in nineteen ninety-eight. Having lived a long, beautiful life with the son and young generation. Their legacy of family, faith, and fellowship continues to live on in their children and their children's children. Beginning in twenty-twenty, the family established a weekly prayer hall that is still going strong today. It's the time where the sons, the wives, and their descendants gather for prayer to share family memory and to celebrate each other's accomplishments. The family, Lord God, and we are so blessed. Thank you.
That's a hard act to follow. My nephew, with that, and me so grateful for that today. Probably telling you, you can understand him much better than you can understand me. But anyway, it all started in our immediate family with Newton Dentz. That was my granddaddy. Mars Dentz was his daddy and Shade Dentz was his daddy. Now John Dentz. Hey, John Dentz is somebody. Now we talk about the twelve boys, we're actually thirteen boys and one girl. My oldest brother was the same age as my mama. So for a period of years, my dad had sort of ventured around the state of Florida. He'd done well and he was in the lumber industry. John Dentz actually worked for eight years. He was not a monk. Now, I'll tell you this before I put it further. When they was giving out welfare, said, "John, if you dedicate your seventh son to the United States Army, or you get this pen out." They would, when they would tell him eighteen years old, they would have to go in the army. Said, "I don't want that." Mr. John Rowan, who was over, I think a member of the Selective Service Board at Tom's. He made that plea to my dad and my dad said, "If they got eighteen years old and wanted to go in the war, that's okay." He had no problem with it, but he was not going predestined there. Okay, now, so what about John Dentz? He came to, he was at Darling Park. He was in Live Oak. And just like today, things got tough. He left Darling Park walking, going to Jacksonville for better times. He said when he got to Lake City at that War Memorial Cemetery, they went out and slept, got sleepy, and tired. Kevin and Uncle Joe were walking. They went out and slept on the coal slab and they thought it was, might have been a sawmill site or something of that nature. But early the next morning, this day, sun rose. They could see the glitter, but the tombstone. He said he tore his knees up getting out of there. So, but anyway, you know, a day and a half, they waited on in the Jacksonville and they walked down to a sawmill. Since he made with a sawmill, he knew that was a boiler room and no guy was stole or heart. I don't know which one. There was a man behind the boiler. He said, "John, is that you?" He said, "Yes, he is." And that man was named? What's his name? Mainer Brown. Mainer Brown from Montessori. He had worked with my dad in Greenville and Luthen before he went to Jacksonville. But he was behind the boiler. He said, "When the last time he had something to eat?" The day before. He said, "Stay here until I cut the dust." And when you cut dust for a boiler, you pump the pressure up in the boiler. So he said, "I'll carry you to the house and I get to watch the pictures of me." He cared daddy on, so his wife said, "This is John, my friend, feed him." Prepare him a bed. So daddy stayed there with Mainer Brown for two or three months. And by that time, both of us got out of here with Jacksonville. And I reckon that was since the third or third. They came to fold it. So my dad was out there folding it for ever since thirty-two or thirty-three before he came here. Now, the sailor Dentz, the sailor Bella, led that particular time. My grandmama people came. My grandmama and her daughters and her husband came from Brooksville. They were working with the Wilson Lumber Company down in Brooksville. So they moved to Perry and the Homer Hayes family brought my grandmama and daddy to Perry. She brought Bessie, Danny, and Jenny. Sailor was born in Perry. My mother was born in Perry. Well, my granddaddy was a wood writer. For the Wilson Lumber Company show, as time progressed, as time went by, he died. Well, when he died, that left my mama and her brother under ten years old. So it was hard for my grandmother to take care of without a husband. She had a sister who was very prosperous and her husband down at Reddick, Florida. And Reddick is a suburb of Idaho County. She told my grandmother, "If you send them to me, I'll help you with it." So my grand, my mama spent the first three or four years in school, he and Derek. Then she went to Ohio, uh, down to Reddick since she finished the eighth grade. Well, about eighth grade, that was about as high as you could go because most county rural area students didn't go no further than eighth grade, especially in the black community. So she returned to Perry and started doing domestic work. Well, in the meantime, John was at Colley, he was in Perry, and he was at the Hardwood Mill. Now the Hardwood Mill is where the county road camp is today. And that's where the Wilson Lumber Company was. So they got together. My daddy married my mom at thirty-six, thirty-six or thirty-seven, one or the other. Now Jamie's thirty-seven. And they began to have a family. Well, my brother John was born. We was in living in a place called the Jackson Quarter. Mrs. Bessie Jackson's husband was the tax assessor. My grandmother was there. Domestic worker, the maid or the nanny for Mr. Gene Jackson and his sisters. So they had the second child. Thomas came along. Don't you gotta get out of your mama's house? So she moved, they moved to a place called Thompson Quarter. Thompson Quarter had, at that particular time, had a house, was a four bedroom house, I mean, three. Had three, not bedroom, but three rooms. Living room, dining room, and kitchen. Four to the front, four to the back, but it had two sides. My mother and daddy lived at one side. Fred Miller and Karen Bell Miller lived on the other side. They said, "I cried so much they couldn't control me." By that time, another was on the way. So anyway, the Fred Millers, the Karen Bells kept me over there for a while. You know, it's all to help mom and daddy out. Both them, mama was young, daddy was mature. So and this is true, he was about eighteen years older than my mama, that's okay. He was a mature man. He knew how to take care of women, but he had a mom. And she loved him, my dad. Well, you know, if it's time to progress and you're working out there at Wilson Lumber Company, hey, make them live it and they can answer me. Huh, Charles came along. Now, four people sleeping and one bitten. You know, probably were two sleeping with mama. I was sleeping with Mr. Fred and Miss Karen Bell. Another one probably sleeping on the sofa. I had better pack it on the floor. I don't know. It was hard. You know, this we talking about forty, forty-one, forty-two, and forty-three, forty-four. So Mrs. Jackson, as I was talking about, Mr. Bessie, Mrs. Bessie Jackson's husband, he was the tax assessor. So my mama and my grandmama was talking about, talking to Mrs. Bessie Jackson. Saying, "You know Sailor and John need a place to go. They're staying there with Karen Bell and Fred on one side and Bill on the other side." Well, Jackson said, "You know what? I have a piece of property I'll let you, I'll sell." And that was over the two ten East Lee Street where we live now. That was probably a two bedroom house. But with four boys and three, two beds, you know, that, that wasn't bad. But this thing progressed, Chester was born, Bud Luke was born, you know. You gotta be a little bit tight. So we talking about forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, then said, "We better build houses. We better build another house." So we hired several people to really help me with that. And, uh, three bedroom house. That was three rooms. Two, older bed, two of the heads. Not beds, man. Yeah, I'm trying to tell you. Not bed. I can tell you that's right. But you know, by that time, we are five, six, seven, eight, seven years old. Now, we going to school at the North Florida. We call it North Perry. But it's really Color Town and it's at the Sweet Home Missionary Baptist Church. The only place in the quarter had left the lights was the Sweet Home Missionary Baptist Church. We had Carasey Land. You know where the Carasey Land is? Well, you know where the Carasey Land is, you know the outdoor private. You know, that's the place where you take care of. And that was in the woods, you know. So that's where we were. There was no running water in that section of town. But mom and daddy had good control. Mama was a domestic worker. My dad was a sawmill worker. And the children, the oldest two was the caretakers. If there wasn't a caretaker, there was a lady down the street above the church named the Sweden Rivers. Her husband was named Joe Rivers. Yeah, they were the, what we call? That's sweet. They care some. Where you take care of three. She slaps, she plings, she feathers, and she beats. Whatever need to be done, she took care and told mama got home. Now, as time progressed, you know, we moving on up and down from that forty-five, sixty, seventy, start of school. There was a school over there we went to school in. The Sweet Home Missionary Baptist Church. That was no running water. That was two outdoor privates. I got for the boys and the girls. And that's where we went to school for four years. And we walked home for lunch. Got home at lunch. Know what it was? Syrup and biscuit. No bacon, no chicken, none of that. But anyway, we was moving right along and doing good too. Only one of us was sick. That I can remember as well as having my brother dead, he felt new hunger. But the rest of us, if we went to the doctor, I would think we know nothing about it. But we knew that was doctor in town because as the midwife stopped catching my mom's baby, Doctor Green had a job. And I think he, Chester was born then. So when Doctor Green delivered Chester, you know, the lady next door was there ahead with him, she had to go cook for her husband. I was about six years old. They gave me Chester to take care of me, John did. So that's what we done. We took care one another. Earlier, Sailor did not allow you to go a hundred yards from the house where Doctor Fred got. They believed in doing that. They done that religiously. Nobody moved on you. Everybody moved to the command of somebody else. My mom and dad done that good. But let me tell you about this. In the meantime, we was coming up. We would go to church without shoes. Sunday school. The old bricks would always speak those hellfire and brimstone sermon. If you don't get religion, you die and you going to hell. That will actually sink and it will work. I was the first one that got religion in my life. They said, "If you want to go to heaven and you respond, say the Lord took it up on himself to bless you, and if you died before you was twelve, you was going to hell." After twelve, it was on you. I had no intention of dying, but I sure don't want nothing to happen to me. And I was not safe that time. Now, that was in still on us. Even to some Sunday mornings when we'd be, the preacher'd be walking. Now, there was no cars or there was two cars in the community. Teen Young had one car and Son Miller, Elijah Miller, had another. Everybody walked. But if a man came by, the preacher were walking out in his brick. We saw him coming. We was shooting marbles that morning before he got there. We put the marble in our pocket and we vacated until he left. That was the respect we had for the preacher and the people going to church. We would not do that. We would not desecrate. Now, you pass the church, now pass people going to church. They wait with beer followers, you know, son. I don't say that the beer follower was sitting to hell, but we sure that action ain't gonna do you no good. But anyway, that's what we did. Now, we moving on up. About ten years old, eight, nine, ten years old, where we need to get out of the hell. I knew my mom and daddy had a problem trying to beat us. Anything I done to help was gonna be a blessing. I realized that story. I knew when we went to other people's house, the other children might have been need a piece of pork chop. Arts and cake. And what's going on in my house. Bread. Cornbread. Peas one day. Black eyes that is. Bean the next day. Lime. Cabbages. Cabbages one day. Rude a bag of the nill. It was a ritual. And when I went through my neighbor's house and I saw the peaches, you know, they have a peach color and all that, it was a long time before we got all of that. First my dad, to try to pay for the house he had just built. He had a house full. Most people in the neighborhood had one or two kids, and my mom and daddy had five, six at that time. Keep on running now. Every time. The midwife come or the doctor come. Might not understand what was going on, but it was a crime going on. Until all of us was there, we had, we took picked up little jobs around the community, you know. I remember working for this Homer Hayes Senior, carrying in wood for the fireplace, carrying in wood for the stove. Not only that, for other who stayed at King's Center. It was a, um, Jefferson Street, we was rowing for Jefferson Street, which was a, I really call it a fluent neighborhood. Although fluent street where all the band shots live. And we were faith in that, and we were frequent that street most of, you know. Sure, I think I might have gone and asked him, could I do something for him? And they would appease you with the job. So. I realized at that time that there was some help needed. And I was willing to obey. And put a little burden in my pocket too. But. About that time, Mr. Pet Smith came by. In the fifties, fifty-one, fifty-two. Buckeye, we began to hear talk about Buckeye. They was gonna move the town. Mr. J.C. Dixon was doing the plumbing. Pet Smith had a contractor doing the grassing in the yard. We would actually crawl on our knees and plant that grass in the yard. We done that. Everyone was big enough to work, went to work. I, Moses Brother John, Thomas, Jimmy, and Charles. We went to work and done that. Get our money. We carried straight home to mom. She took that money, she put it up. She bought our clothes. She helped our food, whatever we need. That's how it happened. And I done that for years. I done that, I, I'll tell you a little bit later. But the next job I got was. Mr. Roy Saiten came by, at that time, he had graduated from University of Florida, he. He was an agroco. He had a farm out there on two-twenty-one. He asked my mom, Sarah, I see you've got some boys around here, I need somebody to help. He said, of course you did, Mr. Roy, he said. I need somebody to help. You have eggs? Help me on the phone, whether it's plodding, feeding chickens. Or killing chickens and helping. Be going to Win Dixie, A and P, C and J, the Skyland Restaurant. When the chicken laid out, when the egg, when the chicken got to, when they lay inside. They was for meat purpose. We would go out there four o'clock in the morning. Me, Jim, and John, we would clean a hundred and fifty chickens up there. And Jimmy was there. He'll tell you I'm telling you. And when we got home. Now, that was no Camry soap, that was more, uh, the Sweet Sip Fella soap. It was office soap, a lot of soap. Now, a lot of soap makes hair look long, look less. You know, and, uh, it was real cold. With the wood stove and the wood fireplace, it wasn't wet, you know what I mean? After we got out that morning, we went to work. Come back, keep it on care of the scoop. Cause the bus was running, the buses left us gone. And our hand would have a fish oil, I mean, a chicken oil. Chicken grease on that. We washed it the best we could. But that cold water and that soap just was not dead water.
Did you have any water?
Money, wasn't no water nowhere in the neighborhood. But anyway. We done that for years. Uh, for a couple of years, didn't we? Now, I had planned the grass, and I worked with Joe Dagan. I had worked with Mr. Pet Smith. And we now ventured into the quarters. Now, we was in one end of the quarters, the Peacock Quarter, the Prince Quarter, it was near. We had to go across that. Street. And we, we did that. But we did that on the strict guide of the people in the community. They would watch you, they would tell on you, they wouldn't even give you a whip if they needed you. There was some people down there. That I will never forget. The next old neighbor was Sir Rosa, Miss Rosa and H. White. Who came there with the Dick brothers from Alabama. AZ Macon. And his wife was Hazel, and their two son was our next neighbor, Miss Georgia. Charlotte Frank. Which is Curdy Young's daddy and Sylvester Young's dad. And I love to tell these people names because they was about a part of our life. We were trying, we didn't know nothing about organizing baseball and all this kind of stuff. These people would share with us. They only had one or two kids, we had six or seven by that time. So. If we participated in the school, social activities at the school. We had to go to Mr. Son Miller and ask him to care us to. We were too small to walk by a saddle. You know, and he probably charge you a quarter. If you had a quarter, boy, you got a quarter, pop your shirt. It'll remind you the quarter to give me, take it. That was good for us. But when you got about fourteen years older. We come through, come through town. There was always a group of young men, young boys. Who would throw at you. Now, if we went down Jefferson Street, when we came back, it was on Southern Street. And I'm sorry, keeping, you know, the good time bullies, people gonna be around here. And, and we ain't found the dickassman gun. You know, but they never would jump out the car and fight you, but there was always the white and stuff. Which is good. But the community as a whole. Took care of them. My daddy worked at the sawmill, my momma worked, she's domestic health, she's health. If anybody got hold to a circus, they would give it to my mom. Now, she used to work for a man called Doctor Bowden. He had ran the store, whatever she cooked for dinner. If it was too much, she brought it home to us. She worked for Mr. Phil, Bill Stever. He had Deacon Beach. They was cooking the cafe, if there was any hushpuffish fish, it brought it home to us. Man named Tom Cass was getting Mr. John well. Crates of bonns for Christmas. Thanksgiving. Man raising watermelons. John, I knew you got these boys. Come by and keep you doing. So my. Is everybody, there's some good in all. And I have no problem. I have no problem loving others. Because I was loved, but I didn't know that be what love was. Not only that, my daddy taught us a thing. The three things. Problem. Protected, and a provider. He done the best he could. My head talked to it today, in this great. Now. As we move on. To a big part of life. Joe Dagan went back, and I told you I worked with him a little bit, uh. On the phone. He was taught in the going back to law school. I was working with him at the time, he said, I brought grace and Edwin Benson. Here, Georgia, they gonna take over the farm. I really don't need you, but I'll carry you down to Win Dixie, which is the building of faith. Talk to Mr. James Rockson, see what he give you a job. He did. I bagged groceries for the next year. Then, then come along Mr. Pet Smith. Tom, what are you doing? Bagging groceries to Win Dixie. I need some help at the old club. Right there. I need somebody that wait, take. Help get two baskets in the kitchen. I'll take it. Pay four dollars a night, most of my hell made a lot, in my life. Four dollars a night, when I down to Tuesday night, which is me night. Probably got home the next morning at one o'clock. But whatever was left, they would give it to me. If there was chicken. I carried a chicken home, a box like that, paint pot. I got that four o'clock in the morning, whatever time the morning go, I done that on that pot. And I could hit them for a ten. They would get it up and eat. And then, you know, there's always something for that, we had to, but he was working under care alone. And we had to give his lunch to the, my brother Jimmy. Boy was scared. He, 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 he go by. On Southern Street, going by that cemetery, he fly. He walk, he, he walk close. When he got to that cemetery on Southern Street, he blew. But anyway, that's good. So the next year, I was out in Singleton High School. The next year, I went to work. George Dick was down across it. Mr. Brad Henry was driving a labor truck, and he already had a load. He would carry down there on a, on a Monday morning, but he couldn't, I couldn't ride every day. So I had to stay on my own. My momma would get up in the morning. Cook it to me. She sent me breakfast, he sent me twelve noon. And it was Jimmy's job to get to Reverend Ware at First Baptist Church. And we was already down at the bottom. And he come to First Baptist Church, and he was giving it to Reverend Ware. And he wasn't there, Reverend Ware would need it. He would go by and get, give him a lot. That was Jimmy's job. I thanked them for that. When I got my money, my momma had a plan, I was making a dollar out. Twenty dollars that money went to my mom. You know, then I had to pay for a place to stay, and I mean, which was seven dollars, that's all it was charged. So I had about six dollars left. I don't know if to do it, who I would, but it be nothing. And, but anyway. Five years. I went down there, working the lumber shed. Ship and shed, I got to be the lumber grader, I got to be the lumber checker. Just promotion. Dollar and forty and fifty cent a hour. So. Joe had come out of law school, and he ran for county judge, and I went by there to tell him. Judge, I'm coming by here now to let you see my family. I had my family in. Tom, what you got? Got my little baby, they got a, got a wife. He said, well, give me a call about the cigarette man. It's church, if she help me. Get a letter. I gave a lot to her. You got a letter. Come back about two or three months later, going back to Madison to care her. Judge, you're on, sir, Tom, look at me, fake. I'm ready to come home. I need a job. Where you gonna work? Ain't for one night him right now, I can see it, black and working, making some money, that's for him. See, I see the man in the corner. Somebody will help you if you present yourself. Nobody helps us in this world by themselves. I learned that first. Now. So, you know, we, I'm fast forwarding a little bit now. I don't know. Got over to Buckeye. Doing good, taking care of my family, children, being born. Look, community mind, you know, I know where I come from. I wanna reach back and help pull somebody else up. So that was a group called the Perry Man Club. I joined that Perry Man Club in order to, you know, somebody up out of the dump. So by that time, you know, things looking a little bit better. They said, okay, we need to find somebody to run for, for the office. Long as he was there, Thomas jumped the man. I felt, you know, I, I didn't tell for the rap, my dad before left, so I didn't know it was coming up. But she said, no, that ain't happening. But anyway, we convinced her, it was okay. I ran, and I lost by ninety-six votes. It was fifteen hundred votes cast. Counting by the election. Fifteen hundred votes cast. I lost it by, was it ninety-seven? Ninety-seven, six or seven votes. But anyway. David Cook Pepper. One, it was a firework. Man in the bank, what was his name? Carl Pepper, Choo Choo, now everybody remember Choo Choo? Yeah, a man in the bank, what was his name? He was loud, sort of loud. His son, I think, a dog got killed in a blink. Full of war, Henry Ford. And, uh. Man that are on the steam. That was about those things. But I go them, I got, now, I got seven hundred and sixty-seven votes to start with. He, the, David Cook Pepper got three hundred and some votes. I got forty-seven percent of the votes instead of the fifty. The neighbors run over again, and Cook Pepper beat me out, six or seven votes. That's okay. But anyway, he stayed there a year, he got married in Maryland, and he said. Now, I was like, we leaving this town, we leaving the city. So she went out, and it was, they had you a few weeks in, uh, appointed the second person, I finally got her. Got her for it. Stayed there fourteen years. Without a hope. Woke up one morning. My neighbor says, I'm gonna run for the city. I said, good, I'm gonna run. So that's where it was at that particular time. Years. Wife got sick, mama died. Build a church. And the lady was running for county commission, told him, said, she appointed me to serve at the North Saint Paul Legion of Angels. After she appointed me. When she got ready to retire, she said, I'm going to retire, but I'll support you. That's where I am today. It's the second term, I ain't getting. Now, folks. I'm telling you. God is good. He'll do it for you. And I love him for it. Now, I tell the people all the time. Call me, I might not be doing anything, but I will listen. I will return to call. That is the commitment I have with them. Appointed official, elected official, or no official. Okay. But now, that certain thing still goes on. My momma loved them together. Thanksgiving was her day. So. I don't know how you herd my nephew with these. Married. Every month. Two or three times a month, every one of us in Perry get together. We eat, we talk, not fight. Mama didn't allow to fight, she didn't like it. The, none of that stuff, but we still don't. We might have a difference, but we learn to have a difference and love one another. Okay. On Thanksgiving, every boy she had, she would. I've been married, huh, sixty years. Only this one. Go together. Now. So as time progressed, the family thought, with the preachers in the family said, we need to have a family prayer. "We need to have a family prayer call." We meet everybody after noon at six o'clock, on Zoom, on Facebook, and any other way we can meet, and have a prayer call. Now, that is my story. With that, I appreciate Taylor County. I appreciate all the program I ever did. Now, if you thank the line, call, and see what I come.
We might have some questions.
Okay, yeah, go on.
Can you tell us about your display?
What's that?
Your display's up here.
Oh. Well, you know, yeah, all my local brothers is here. Were y'all standing?
Please.
Who's not here? One, two, three, four, five, Joe. Joseph's not here, Charles is not here, and Rudy Jim. Two in Detroit, and one in Perry. Three brothers deceased.
Three?
Three, yeah. John, Newt, and Eddie Kent.
So you're gonna tell us about the exhibits.
Okay. That's my father, Newt, right there, father, too. That's my daddy, John. Your truth. Now, I, this way Culp resigned his sleep after he was there a year. The county, the city council had about two or three months, whether to appoint or have a special election. One of the drivers, the thing behind the special election or the appointment was Jack, Frank Russell, was, had to go, and they appointed Jack and Chuck. That was one thing in our favor. It didn't necessarily have to be, I don't know, even though it was a city, that county's difference, but city charter. This is my mom's hat, sayer's hand. Okay, in that cage, that's, my dad's cage after he was sick. My dad's cage. He was sixty-eight years old when he passed. But he had a colon cancer. That part. Yeah, he probably was living on his hat, but he had colon cancer, he lived three years after he had colon cancer. Can't hardly worship for what are shands and they worked on him, and he came back. Now, the morning he died, he told my mom this, "Sayer, I slept better last night." Then I didn't eat in three years. She said, she said, "God, you trying to..." She looked around, he fell back on the bed, and saw tickets left. Yeah. Well, them thought about the city council, I don't know what I done. Do something right. Now, New England thought she had the death. That's okay. We, we okay with that. Sixty years ain't bad. That's my four brothers. These are my sister-in-law. Now, in fairly sound, you have a family this large, where their house would knock down and break. It's like I told you before, they might have some different, but they agree to be there. This is my brother Newt's flag, so he died, it's given to us, and it's just, we have to be there. Oh, Purple Heart. Yeah, Chester had, got the Purple Heart when he was in Bethel. Wife would send him a German chocolate cake. She wrapped it in her towel, and shit took it. That's before he got married and all this good stuff. And I think he had it out there in that field, where one of them affect dogs smell. And he was trying to wrap it up, and I think somebody shot it. I can't swear that I wasn't dead. That's all I have, any one of you have something, sir?
So when you were talking about your family home, where was that located in relation to downtown?
That Washington Street there? All the way to the end of Washington Street, to Richmond, and one block under Richmond. Was at least fifty. We turn that corner, it's about fifty yards on that road.
So down toward Ash Street?
Yes. Ash Street is the next street, it's Crow Flyers through the woods. Any more?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Now, I know that, um, you know, it eventually was twelve of y'all over there, but what other big, big families do you remember that lived over where you guys lived? Were there any, were there any other big, big families?
One more big family. It was twelve of us in our house, but the Colas had about thirteen in their house. So that was a big family also. The rest of the family was one to two beyond.
He wouldn't let no different to us. He ain't girl.
That's great.
Actually, this, this book is the story of your candidacy from, from the beginning.
To the end.
To the, to the, to the.
Nice.
Very good.
One thing my daddy really preached about, he don't go to jail to get out of jail. If you steal something, he ain't coming. And he don't believe in getting you out of jail. He doesn't tell me to be responsible to get out of the cell. Mama purple to keep us out of jail, to make us go to school. I heard myself on the panel. You might not learn anything, but you gonna go to school, and you won't be a class clown. You won't be a class clown, you owe every day, and you gonna do it for toll of this. And that was the pressure, tend to young business, and don't know everything. Don't always be, I know, I know, I know, but don't know nothing. You're supposed to do, God's election. Yeah, another statement they used to make. They didn't have HRS, or nothing that magnitude. They control you with the battlefield man. Now, they told us the battlefield man, we get you, we believe that. Until this day, I have not seen the battlefield. So that was crowd control, that was controlled in the afternoon, when you got off traffic, I'm going home for the battlefield man. The other thing is, just a minute, right? I'm going to mend the saddle, beat your butt. So when you get grown, won't nobody have to do it.
I'll answer that, you know, anytime you're twelve, boys in the family, and, uh, well, at the time, Chris Reynolds in ninety-seven, a neighbor came. And he said, "Yeah, every family in Teller County is like, sayer and John Boys, we believe, in prison or jail." And I thought that was very, very important. We just knew they would there, we gonna be by ourselves, and when nobody would come there.
And the last thing he had, who's gonna be the beat, everyone?
Me and Daddy, me, me and Daddy, me and Daddy.
Well, thank you so very much. Thank you so very much. It was a delight for me hearing you talk about people that I have only read about, or I've seen their pictures in the books, or got to know them well into their major years, and to get to glimpse of them on their life and everything. So thank you very much, that was really, really nice. We need to get together and talk some more, so. Um, so just a few, few quick announcements. The historical society, we are, just a little bit of background. The county owns our building, and we have a hundred-year lease, that is fifty years old. Um, fortunately, when the hurricane hit, our building is under the county's insurance umbrella, for which we are eternally grateful. Um, if you look around, we did take, our, our, our suite buildings are below, which took some of the hit, uh, but we are working with them to get, get some repairs done. Mainly it's water damage, the, um, the outside of the building got damaged, the water has seeped from the seams. It's not really coming in from the roof, but it's coming down the walls and seeping in, we got a lot of damage to the upstairs, that you'll see. Um, the ledges are, are sealing up here, we got some damage, yes, sir.
There's one thing I was about to say, that I will talk to the county commissioner, see if he can be helpful, provide some help with this building. The other thing I'm gonna tell you that I forgot. I ran under the countywide and statewide election. Two years later, it was the Beverly lawsuit that brought the same member districts. The same member district provided for us to have some representation from the neighborhood. I am so grateful for that. Some are gone, some get alive. And I would, if it was a brand newspaper, I'd like for them to get that information, that. The Delft family do appreciate the hard fought effort that they went through to make this possible.
Yes, and I believe that came up when we were talking about the history you guys just did. Um, and some of those folks, some of those people that were part of that original lawsuit were represented again, and they were there. Connected today, so we really need to, we'll spotlight them for sure. So, uh, the building, we're working on it. Uh, we've been very fortunate that we continue to get just as well from donations. And I know that the GP closure is, of course, a very tender spot for us still, but I would like to, uh, extend our bases, the historical society, to the local people at GP, because they graciously donated their archives, photos, and records. And even we have boxes of film that they gave us. So we are, that is our next big task, is to go through this beautiful mountain material that we have, that, uh, that they donated to us. I was glad to see, they recognized that they needed to be here, and it needed to be preserved. So, you'll really get a kick out of that. We have pictures going back to, um, Mr. Jim Sutherland, Mr. Jim Sutherland, Barstac, was the original PR man. And he was a PR man, he knew what to do, he did photos, he had our pictures. So they kept everything from Mr. Sutherland's era, all the way down to Spots. So we have pictures, we have newsletters, we have maps, we have aerial shots of the mill as it progresses. Um, and my, one of the things that I'm super excited about is the safe that they used in the original mill that was out there. They have that, and they donated it to us. So we're working with the same company to get news. That is gonna be a, the biggest task is what fit through yours. We're very hopeful it will, but we're excited that, uh, that's coming our way too. So that's just a, just one of the biggest donations they can fill, two trapezoids of materials, so we're happy to get that. Um, we've also been working with the city of Perry. Uh, if you notice the new trees that we have around this courthouse square, uh, to replace those crate barrels. Uh, we helped them by writing a grant in conjunction with Duke Energy, that they were awarded, that they had to kind of go to a nonprofit, which we are. So we were glad to be able to do that. We're looking forward to working again with Duke Energy and the Chamber to hopefully get some news, get some great money to do Christmas lights, and some new volume for downtown. Um, our downtown Christmas event that we sponsored, we, between all of the, between all of the different aspects of it, we raised about a thousand dollars for the historical society, which is a, a big deal for us. That is, uh, that's about three, four months worth of electricity, just paying power bill over the whole of it. So we did, so we're really grateful for all the support there. We've already started on plans for this summer's Christmas event, so stay tuned for that. And I also want to remind everyone that we award a five hundred dollars, I'm sorry, a thousand dollars fellowship every year. If you have a graduating senior, high school senior, homeschool, private school, public school, please encourage them to fill out the application and, uh, turn it in, so that we can afford that. We do keep it all local, they're all local students, and we're happy to continue supporting them. Do we have any more announcements, Jaycee?
Um, also, if you have, if you, if you notice, we are redoing our displays, so if you have any photographs or artifacts, uh, we're working on redoing our displays. Um, we, uh, I was promised by someone here that we were gonna get mom one Dirk and Dear book with coffee. But we're still looking for Dirk and Dear books. We do not have one copy of Dirk and Dear book. We have one copy of a Dirk and the Reunion book, so we don't have any Dirk and Dear book. And the funny part is, is I hear all the time the garbage man said they kind of, but they won't be able to us, and it keeps moving. So if you have any artifacts or history, and really think about, uh, donating to us for your children, keep your, because sometimes you're not gonna be able to do our early copies. If we are gonna do a digital copy of one Dirk and Dear book that's promised to us.
I told him this morning. I think they have a, um, my parents have something they're gonna donate, and it actually, that book actually has a, um, a very good map of the Brooklyn area in its heyday.
Wonderful, wonderful. That is great. And that's the other thing, we're gonna be looking for some folks that worked out at GP to come up and help us with these aerial shots, and identify what these things are, because we've got, they're huge, the poster-sized photos. But if you don't know what it is, it, you know, it's really, we don't know what it is, so if you, if you have that knowledge, you certainly want to use it. Um, and if you look back behind, over there by the facility, the, uh, Pixie Hotel, Pixie Hotel, those are some of the original room keys that we had recently donated to us, on, uh, several photos of the building. Um, it's going through a change right now, I'm just, uh, looking forward to seeing what it, what it comes to be now that the bank isn't very warm. And so with that, I'd like to say thank you, looking forward to our next meeting, and if you'll give us a kiss, man?
We got to know everybody. The bill was so busy with the day, uh, he said, "I'm gonna come." And I thought, "I'm gonna stop." A little delayed, but I'm here, and Thomas, I really enjoy all of those memories, y'all.
So thank you very much. If you'll give us just a few minutes, we may set out some refreshments, and we certainly hope you can join us. And if, like I said, if you have any questions about anything you should, usually you should, if somebody has, just ask, and we'll do the best we can to answer them. Thank you.